24 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission will have an invocation offered by Commissioner Pajali, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Praise God. Lord, thank you for another day of life and all the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Please watch over and give our decision-making and guide our decision-making process as we move forward this evening to better Sandusky. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Barris, do you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Pajali?
Here.
Mr. Coons?
Here.
Mr. Crable?
Here.
Ms. Fargo?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting in November the 25th, 2024. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Waddington?
I move that we accept the November 25th minutes as presented.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, and the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. We have three public hearings this evening. First is regarding the natural gas aggregation program. This hearing is going to be presented by Mr. Tom Belish, the president of Buckeye Energy Brokers. Mr. Belish, the podium is yours. I understand this is the second time you've done this today, so I'm going to get, I'm going to guess you're gotten real good at it by now.
Yes, we've been working on this for a while, so we've had the opt-in program, and now we're doing all the steps for the opt-outs. I'd like to thank everybody in town for voting for the aggregation and having that passed. I do have some handouts as well. And I'd like to thank the finance director and city manager as well for their work on the energy aggregations here and working with me on that. Just in the background, the city and the natural gas usage here in town, so about 83% of households in town have natural gas, and about 12% are all-electric, and then there's about 2% of others, maybe propane or something like that. So it is a program that affects a lot of people here in town. On the electric side, we have about 5,000 customers participating in that program, so we think it could affect up to about 83% of that would be participating or possibly benefiting from this program. So what we're going over tonight is the plan of operation, and that plan of operation needs docketed with the Public Utilities Commission, and then the city can be certified for natural gas, just like the city certified for electric. So I just need to go over a few things required by them. The opt-out process, the opt-out process is very similar to the electric program, so eligible residents will be given a letter and 21 days to opt out. If they don't opt out, then they have, they'll get a letter from Columbia Gas and giving them another seven days to opt out. So there'll be two letters, every resident will get, every eligible resident will get two letters and two chances. So there's no, there's no switching fee on that, and then when we have the program as well, there's no early termination fee. So customers, residents can come and go into the program, just like the electric program. So we'll be mailing letters just to the city limits, inside the city limits. So Columbia Gas will give us a list, and it'll just be by zip code, so we have to scrub that list and make sure it's accurate. And so that's, that's part of our service, what we do. So there's, you know, four, four really different types of customers here. So we have current program members, so we don't currently have a program, so there's none of those. But once it's up and running, current program members are eligible to receive a letter. And then there's customers with the local utility on the default rate and not under contract, those are eligible as well to, to get a letter. So if you're under contract with another supplier, you will not get a letter. And then if you're in the percentage of income payment plan, you will not, not get a letter either. Those are aggregated by the state of Ohio. So just wanted to, so once a customer is in the program, then the billing will remain the same. So there's budget billing, it stays the same, automatic withdrawal of the checking stays the same. So there's no, there's no changes on that. Columbia Gas still has the pipelines, still does the meter reading, billing, all the customer service type things that a local utility does. Now, customer service from the program, enrollment, residents will call the, the selected supplier. We are hoping to, keep that going. Okay, thank you. So we are hoping to get some pricing soon and get some options and then have a select, have a selected supplier at an upcoming meeting. So what we'll do on that, so for enrollment, residents will call the selected supplier, and then any program questions, they can call me at Buckeye Energy Brokers to, to ask questions if there's some issues or need some advice on something. So customers with, the calls I get mostly are customers with another supplier want to know, can they join? And the answer is yes, but there may be an early termination fee that they need to be aware of. So the next, so in this slide, I have the next steps coming up. So we have the, we have tonight's meeting, it's for the plan of operation, and we're asking for the commission to adopt that, and then, and then once that's signed, I can file for certification with the PUCO. The next step would be to sign a supplier agreement, and then, and then would be getting those letters mailed. Once we have an agreement, we can mail letters at that price and, and then start flow. We're still shooting for March. So we'd like, we'd like to shoot for March, it's kind of an aggressive schedule, but there's an advantage in that the electric program renews in April. So we don't, kind of don't want to do both in the same, same month. I think it'd be best to spread it out. So if we could do one in March, one in April, I think that would work out well. So, you know, that's all I have, that's the, those are the steps to implement the program, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Obviously, this is a public hearing, so we open questions up to, to the public. If there are any public, questions regarding the gas aggregation program, please step to the podium and share with us what your questions are. Seeing no one, Mr. Zuloff certainly come on up and, for those that don't know you, I can't imagine anyone not knowing you, you can identify yourself at the podium.
Hi, Mike Zuloff, 243 East Market Street. Really happy this is happening, glad that we're taking the initiative to make it happen. I think it's going to save residents a lot of money. My question is, in the, well, first of all, I'd comment that the, that the opt-out program is just much better, because if you have an opt-in program, too many people are going to miss the boat, they'll be confused by it, and it just, it just doesn't work. We've, we had opt-in programs in the electric, in the electrical program, the electricity program before, and it, the, the opt-out is much better. So just so that I understand, though, apparently if somebody's already in a program, they, we can't send them a letter, we can't, how does that work? Will they be, still be able to get out of their program and join the program, they just won't be pursued by us? Is that what I am to understand? How does a resident make sure they're in this as soon as possible? And besides, so that's my question, and my also, my comment is, I hope that we make this happen as soon as possible. We're into the heating months, we could see some, you know, some folks could see some high heating bills, so the sooner we make this possible, the better. Thank you very much.
Mr. Belish, can you give us an answer to that?
Yeah, so just want to go back, back a couple slides. So he was referring to eligibility. Now, if you're with Columbia Gas, you're eligible to get a letter, but those under, under contract will not be on the list. So what we, what we'd have to do to get them, you know, one, we can just do a notice, like you do everything else, city's website and social media and those kinds of things to get to those people. The other one would be maybe to negotiate that the selected supplier does send an opt-in letter to the balance of the customers. So I think vast majority of the customers will be eligible, but then you'll have a subset that are not eligible and under contract that we could possibly get them to mail an opt-in. We still call it an opt-out program, but it'd be a supplemental opt-in opportunity.
And at that point, then those customers would at least have a contact route back to the provider.
Yeah, correct.
I like, I like that idea.
Okay.
You know, if that can be accomplished, that seems like, that seems like that would be the most effective route to, to get everybody that really wanted to be involved, whether they know about it or not, at that point, they'd know about it.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll work, we'll work towards that, I think that's a great idea.
And my understanding is you're, you're, you're brokering this, this, this program.
Yes.
You will select the provider.
Well, well, the city will select a supplier, so we'll, we'll get the bids, I have them bid, I have them due tomorrow, and we'll see what those offers are, we'll go, go through, work with the administration to select a supplier from those three. I do have three interested bidders, and we'll just look at, see what, what they are.
Sure. And so obviously, we should be guaranteed that at that point in time, our, our residents are benefiting from the lowest-cost supplier for, for our city.
Well, yeah, yeah, select the lowest-cost provider, but it's got to be acceptable, you know, we may reject all three, I don't know. But we would definitely go for the lowest bidder based on tomorrow's bids, yes.
Ms. Fargo, sounds like you had a question.
No, I, I was just, I was thinking what Mr. Zuloff said, and it can be very confusing with all of our resources, whether it's electric or gas, and people coming to your door and doing things, and I know this isn't that type of program. So clearing this up, just understanding that it'll be the lowest amount that we can get, and if the bids come back and it's not cheaper than what we currently are paying, you won't, you won't go with that, correct?
Yeah, if it's, doesn't seem to be a fair bid or unattractive, you know, I call it attractive. If it's attractive, I would recommend it. If I don't think it's, you know, worth recommending, I probably won't.
Okay, and then you, you had been here previously, and you said the bids are due tomorrow, and again, I'm going to go back to Mr. Zuloff, asking about the winter months. I know my gas bill, I live in a house in 1907, it's very expensive to heat, and March, of course, it starts to get a little better around here, so March is the earliest we can do that?
Yeah, so once I have the paperwork from tonight, it's signed, then I file for certification, that takes 30 days, so getting the bids aren't the critical path.
I know.
It's the certification, and then 21-day opt-out period, and then the seven day after that.
Okay.
That's two months, and it's not, so it's not really the date.
So the reality is, we're going to lose the winter, we're going to lose the heart of the winter months.
Yeah, because of the way the old contract was, and only customers with Columbia Gas are eligible. So had we gone directly from opt-in to opt-out, those ones that opted in, that really want to be in the program, would not have gotten a letter.
Right.
Yeah, they would not have been eligible to get one.
Additional questions from the public regarding this program? Questions from commission?
Two.
Murray?
Thank you. Two easy questions. You've, you've done this a long time, you've tracked the savings that participating communities have achieved. Can you give us a sense of what the overall savings have been? And understanding for the consuming public that if it's a 10% savings, you're not saving 10% on the entire bill, because there are two basic parts to the bill, there's the transmission piece, and then there's the raw material or the gas piece. The second question is, are all communities eligible to participate in this, or is it limited to cities? And if other communities want to join, I'm sure they can contact you.
Yeah, so, you know, it needs to be a city with publicly, a public utility, like if you don't have your own electric system, you wouldn't be eligible, there's certain cities in the area that have them. So we're working through Columbia Gas, so it needs to be cities with Columbia Gas or Enbridge on the eastern side of the, of the state is Enbridge. If you have that, some, some suppliers are smaller, and they don't have choice programs like this. So any, any local city that has Columbia Gas would certainly work with, absolutely. Savings has, has been hard to, hard to come by, hard, hard to get. So in the past, we did have 10% off programs, that was through Volunteer Energy, and they, they've since gone bankrupt, not, not because of that, but other reasons, but it's hard to, hard to get. But we have, do have some suppliers that recently have been able to guarantee savings. But, and then there's also fixed rates, because natural gas prices are low now, could be worth just locking in a fixed rate and being all set. Two years ago, I would say, no, don't do a fixed rate, because prices were like 80 cents a CCF, and now they're 40 to 50 maybe. So if we get something under 50 cents, fixed rate might be the way to go.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments, commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Jolly.
I, I just wondered, so Columbia Gas, did you say they're going to do the billing and you'll use their lines?
Yes.
Do they get, is there any sort of incentive for them in this program, or do they get a percentage, or how's that work?
Not at all. So Columbia Gas and all utilities in Ohio only make money on their value-added services. So when you're just passing through a commodity like natural gas, whether you're, whether you're a gas utility or an electric utility, if you have a commodity cost like natural gas, you can't add anything to that. So there's no additional charge from Columbia Gas for the gas, the supply of the gas itself.
But by law, they have to accommodate you then, for the lines and whatever other service they provide?
Yeah, yeah, if they didn't have a choice program, any utility over 50,000 customers can be petitioned to have a choice program, but they have one, so we use them, they, they are very cooperative with our, with our program. So we, you know, we appreciate them.
Additional questions, commission? For the public? Thank you, Mr. Belish. If not, I'll consider this hearing closed.
Hey, thank you very much.
Next, we have a public hearing on the 2025 city budget, and that hearing will be conducted by our finance director.
All right, good evening, everyone. So I apologize, some of you have already sat through this last week with finance committee. Mr. Waddington said keep it under three minutes, I don't know if I can do that, but we'll try. All right, so here's the overview of the budget, the 2025 budget timeline, we had to have the first draft of the budget out by November 1st, we met that. We had finance committee recommended this budget for approval at their committee meeting last Friday, it was on December 6th. Today, we are in front of the public, for a public hearing, and also first reading of the budget for commission. We will have a temporary 2025 budget at your next meeting, so the December 18th meeting will have a temporary 2025 budget on the agenda, so that we will have an operating budget to start the first quarter of the year. This can be on the agenda for city commission on the second Monday of January, so that's the January 13th meeting for commission, that's the earliest it could come back and actually be approved by the commission, and that's per our charter. This budget does, does include wage increases at 3%. We are in negotiations with all three of our unions still, so those, once those are settled, we'll have to possibly make additional adjustments to the budget. The revenue figures that you see are going to be conservative, and this is basically just an operation and maintenance budget. The capital plan will follow up next year with more details on what capital plans the city has. As you know, any expenditure over $10,000 will still come back in front of this commission for approval. The one last thing I want to note also is that, as you guys know, the ARPA dollars are no more, they need to all be promised here by the end of the, end of the year here, so in December, we're going to have every penny promised of ARPA dollars, we will not be returning anything for ARPA funding. ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as COVID dollars. This slide here shows our revenue in the general fund. If you go to the left, this is the revenue in 2014, we had about $16.3 million going all the way out to the right. For 2025, we're almost double that number, so we're hitting just over $32 million is our estimate in revenue for the general fund. Here's a breakdown, a pie chart, of where that revenue comes from for the general fund. The biggest piece of the pie is income taxes, we have over $13 million, that's estimated in income tax revenue in 2025, that's about 42% of the budget. The blue piece down there is admissions tax, that's just over $9 million that we expect to receive, 28% of the general fund budget. So those two pieces of the pie right there are 70% of our funds in revenue for the general fund. Going, keep going, I guess, clockwise on that chart there, the departmental revenue is just over $3 million. Those are the dollars that we receive from the police department, the fire department, municipal court, and those kind of things go into departmental revenue. We have property taxes at $1.8 million, lodging tax is at $2 million, and then we have smaller piece of the pie, which is interest earnings, local government funds, and parking tax are shown on there. So all in, the revenue for the general fund is estimated at $32,584,75. Now, our expenditures, this slide here lists the expenditures by fund, so the general fund at the top here is at $32,49,058. So we do have revenue exceeding expenditures by like $9,000 next year in the general fund. These columns here, we have expenditures going back to 2022, 2023, year-to-date, 2024, and then the initial budget for 2024. We don't have a lot of changes, I'll just note some of them where we see a drastic change. Fund number 239 is our state grants. If you go across for 2025, we have just over $3 million budgeted in state grants, and that is because of the grant our community development department received for the Welcome Home Ohio. So we have $3 million budgeted next year for the Welcome Home Ohio grant. As stated previously, the coronavirus relief funds, ARPA dollars is at zero for next year. Federal grants, you'll see next year, we have just over $7 million budgeted, that is again, grants that we've received, the RACE grant, and Marcy Capter gave us a grant for the south side, so those dollars are figured in there, so we can expend those funds next Going through the rest of the funds here, the ones to note, the capital projects, we have $14 million budgeted in projects, but like we said, the capital plan will be back in front of you next year, so we'll have amendments to the budget once we approve capital projects through the commission. The sewer fund down here, you're going to notice a large difference, we have this year, the high-rate treatment project still ongoing, so $25 million is dropping down to $11 million next year for expenditures in the sewer fund. All of our funds total, we're looking to budget right now, $95,222,340. Here's the breakdown of the general fund expenditures, as we talk a lot about the funds, we highlight usually the general fund. The general fund makes up a lot of our departments, police department, the fire department, municipal court, the administrative support is a large department in here, it makes up 35% of the expenditures in the general fund. I should have noted, this is the 2024 column, and this is the 2025 budget columns for each one of these departments. Police department at the top, they're about 19% of the, the budget, if you add the police department plus the police records together. Same thing with the fire department. So those are the two largest departments outside of the administrative support. Like I said before, the administrative support handles a lot of the transfers from the general fund to the other accounts, typically it's the capital fund. This slide here will show you where those dollars are being transferred out of the general fund over to these other items and departments. So this compares your 2024 budgeted expenditures, transfers, I should say, out of the general fund to these departments. 2024 numbers are shown in blue, and the gray numbers are 2025 numbers. First numbers here comparing transit, transit services in 2024 received a subsidy of $750,000, they are budgeted at $500,000 next year. They are working on some cuts and some additional ideas to get that transit budget down to a subsidy of only needing $500,000. A lot of these are staying the same as we go through here, park and rec, that department, the subsidy is staying the same at $275,000. Public art, this one is based off of an ordinance, we have to give 10% of our admissions tax to public art every year, so exactly whatever admissions tax takes in in 2024, they will receive 10% of that for public art programming next year. The same thing with programming, so they had $205,000 budgeted in 2024, that increased to $225,000. They will get 1% of whatever the lodging tax collection is for 2024. So that number is increasing slightly, just so we can accommodate 1% of whatever the lodging tax is this year, they will receive. Housing grants, that remain the same at $400,000, so that's our housing beautification and development dollars, remain the same. Economic development grants is staying the same at $500,000. The issue eight, that stays the same at $1.5 million. Those are all issue eight promises that have been here, takes care of streets, park and rec ideas, planning facilities, things like that. Admissions and parking tax, that remain the same at $4.5 million, that's, comes from the Cedar Fair partnership deal. When we increase the admissions tax and parking tax, we have certain areas that those dollars are allocated. Fire pension and police pension, those two lines are remaining the same. Payroll stabilization does see a decline of only $150,000 budgeted next year. The payroll stabilization this year has a balance of about $941,000, so it has a healthy balance. There wasn't a need at this time to increase that transfer. We do have a lot of pending retirements, we believe in 2026 that will be happening. That payroll stabilization fund also takes care of the years that we have a 27th pay period, that comes to us again in 2032. So we'll have the funding to take care of that extra pay period in that year. So the total amount of transfers that are shown in the budget are $9,845,000 for 2025. This slide here is the number of full-time employees that we have in the budget for next year. The far right column shows your 2025 numbers, and this compares 2022, 2023, and 2024. Not a lot of changes. When it all washes out, we're at the same amount of budgeted employees in 2025 that we have currently in 2024. You'll note that we did see an increase in the amount of police officers, we were at 48 police officers in 2022 in the budget, we've increased that to 53 officers, that goes back to the partnership with Cedar Point, we supplied the police force out there, and we're hopeful that we can get to that number of 53 officers. We're not there yet, but we're, they're trying really hard to get to that number. The fire department also saw an increase, if you go historically, and that was through their contract, so they're budgeted to stay at 51 firefighters next year. Here is the historical general fund expenses, shown in gray on the bar chart there, and then the cash balances are displayed behind there in blue. And that is just to show, okay, this is what we've expended every year, and our target is to have 20% of whatever our expenditures are in reserves. So if something goes sideways, we have a cash balance to rely on. When we do bond ratings, Moody's loves to see our, you know, available cash of being a 20% reserve sitting there. So at the end of next year, with our expenditures right now being 32 million, if we keep that 20% target figure, our cash balance by the end of the year should be at least $6.4 million at the end of 2025. But along the way, we'll probably have some changes to the budget, there will be some amendments to the budget, and as those amendments happen, expenditures increase, we'll still keep the target of 20%, that will also escalate. And that's all I have. Happy to have, answer any questions.
Mr. Waddington, I, it seemed like the longest three minutes of our life.
Just a little wind. I'm glad, if we have any idea.
But very necessary.
Do we have any idea how many retirements in 2026? Do we have any idea how many retirements in 2026? What that number looks like? I know it varies every year.
It does vary every year. We don't have the exact number. Like, we just had, in November, we had somebody surprise retire in December. It's an unknown. We do have some safety service personnel that must retire in 2026.
This is a public hearing, so entertain questions from the public regarding this budget. Also, anyone in the public wish to comment or have questions regarding that? Please share with us your questions.
Wesley Poole, 1939, East Old Gate. Same comment I always make, dealing with budgeting. I find that the transit system provides a significant service to the community that's very important, that I think's important. And as I look at the way we spend money to finance things, if you've got parking and admissions tax, you're going to build a bike trail to cross the causeway to Cedar Point. It seems to me that when you consider who's going to use that versus who's likely to use the transit system and the revenue we actually generate from people being able to get to work and pay taxes, I think you should just give some better thought to cutting back services. Now, if you're going to cut back the dollar ride service, which I know you're not because you can't legally do that, that would be a different story. But the folks that, the bus system that moves people around town, I think probably six, eight years ago, when we started talking about building up the community, we talked about moving people around. When people leave their house and come out in the community, that's what makes the community prosper, okay? Whether they're spending money or visiting people, quality of life is, that's what that's about. And for those folks, if you want them to work, if you want to keep the minimum wage at $6, $8 an hour, or whatever the Fed says now, folks aren't going to be able to afford to buy $30,000, $40,000 cars, and we still need those folks to, in this community, to be able to function. So appreciate you give some thought to that. I think, I'm not big on giving money away, but I do feel that in our community, that if you want the community to prosper, it's going to have to. We can't be weighted down by those, the kind of decision-making. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Additional comments or questions from the public or from the commission? Questions or comments, commission, regarding the budget? If not, I will declare this hearing closed. Our third hearing and last hearing, public hearing for tonight, is on a zone map amendment for 1215 Campbell Street, which will be conducted by our chief planner, Eric Blair.
Thank you. This is a application for a zone map amendment by recommendation of the planning commission for a portion of the parcel 57-65011 to rezone the historic Campbell School Building and its surrounding property as defined by a lot split progress, lot split, which is in progress, roughly defined by the boundary you see on the screen. It would be a rezoning from public facilities to residential multifamily, and the rezoning will enable the historic school building to be renovated and used for long-term residential units. And the planning commission unanimously recommended the rezoning at their regularly scheduled meeting on October 23, 2024.
That's it?
That's what I've got.
Okay.
This is the aerial view.
Comments or questions from the public regarding this zone map amendment? Questions or comments from commission regarding this amendment? Mr. Murray.
Thank you. Two questions. First is, is there a contract in place with the developer, or this is just a preliminary state step, anticipating that that's going to occur? And then the second question is, what's to become of the balance of the property? Should we be taking steps now to do the same rezoning for that property? Because that property holds the promise, holds great promise of hosting additional residential housing, and it seems to me that maybe that's something we should be thinking about at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. So the remainder of the property is owned by Nehemiah Partners. So the Campbell Christian Community Center, which was formerly known as Nehemiah, they plan to stay in the other portion of the building. So what they're doing in partnership with the developer, and my understanding is it's a private partnership between the developer and the property owner Nehemiah Partners, is they're creating two different buildings where there is now one. So there will be fire, safety separation, and they're going to stay in that building. And I believe their intention is to keep the green space so that they can use that for exterior, you know, recreation purposes like they do today. They will come forward with a site plan approval to planning commission. That's part of the step of this project, and we anticipate all of the traffic to remain the same. The parking will be similar as it is today. So the exterior of the property really won't change much from the residents' viewpoint of the neighborhood. But for that historic school building, be able to be reused for residential units.
Well, I'm glad for that, but I will say that leaving that, the rest of that space there seems to me to be a bit of a missed opportunity. It is rarely, rarely utilized, and I go by there quite a bit. So, I don't know, food for thought. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions, commission? Mr. Crable.
Yes. I think it's wonderful. I love to see, you know, the redevelopment of old properties. I know these old school buildings can be challenging when you're trying to redevelop them to a very new purpose and expensive. But I have to say, I echo some of Commissioner Murray's thoughts on this. I don't see the property being used. I mean, there was a time that it was, and you could see activity, but I rarely see activity there, and I hardly ever see cars there. So, I don't know. I think it's a question that kind of hangs in midair, you know, why this? But it will be interesting to see how it works out.
Additional questions or comments, commission?
In Wesley Poole, 1939, East Old Gate. With regard to the blank space that's there, aren't you going to put 10 families in that place to live?
I think there were 10 or 12.
That's what I thought.
For that property, whether, Mr. Blair?
Well, I think I support the owner of the property's idea that that property will be there for those kids to play in, or whatever the families are. Unless you, I can't think of any place any closer than that, that they would have to utilize for whatever it is families do when they're not cooped up inside the house. So just give that some consideration in terms of pushing to fill that space. Just a thought.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Additional comments or questions?
If I may, I'd just like to kind of respond. You know, we're looking at building a rec center. It won't be too terribly far from this site. So I wonder if, just from a purely market-based competitive situation, will this property even remain viable as a recreational site once the rec center itself is redeveloped? So just some more food for thought.
Is there no additional questions?
Mr. Chairman, I think what Mr. Poole might have been alluding to, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is those families will need a place to play and.
I understand.
Yeah, so as far as it being like a designated recreational area, I'm not sure that that's the umbrella it would fall under. And then, I guess my question would be, if you were to develop that, would, that may fall under the subdivision regulations, right? Depending on how many units you wanted to put in there, and I don't know if you'd have to put a road in there or what you'd have to do. So it may become complicated, given that piece of property. Just my comment.
From a zoning perspective, I'd say that it's advantageous to leave it as is until there's a proposal. Because it's public facilities, it limits what you can do. And then if we, if, you know, if that owner wanted to bring a proposal toward a rezoning in the future, then we would see what their plans were. But from my understanding is that they intend to use it as it is today as the center.
No additional comments or questions? I'll declare this public hearing closed. Thank you, Ms. Blair.
Sorry, thank you.
Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda? Please step to the podium. Share with us your name and address and your agenda comments, agenda items.
One last item, and then I'll just leave, and then you guys can have it to yourself. Item six on the agenda, the rent for the use of Mill School. I, at first blush, I just thought it was too much to charge. There was not information in there to bounce, so let me temper that with, I don't really know, because there wasn't enough information provided to make a good determination. So let me ask that, as you go through this. One, they indicated they came up with a number. They said they matched it against some similar places in the area, but they didn't identify who where, or how much, or what the comparison was. So those numbers and who they did that with would be fine. And I've also, and I've asked for the information on the frequency that it is currently being rented over the, whatever period of time that we've been there, that we've been renting it up to now, what the frequency is. So if they include that information, I appreciate it.
Get to that piece of legislation, seek those answers. Additional comments on agenda items? Commissioners, you have before several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept those?
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion. Agreeing no objection, that motion's approved. Commissioners, we have eight items on the consent agenda this evening. I am going to ask that item G be moved to the regular agenda from the consent agenda. And you might, you might wonder why I'm asking for that, because I'm the person that put the agenda together. Well, I make mistakes too, and I think it was a mistake to have item G on the consent agenda. I think it deserves some discussion, and perhaps some additional questions and answers will be forthcoming. Any other items that we'd like to move from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? If not, Mr. Coontz?
Just one brief comment pertaining to item G.
We'll get to, we'll get to that, Mr. Coontz. Ms. Barnes, you present the consent agenda, less item G.
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, approval of natural gas aggregation program plan of operation of governance. Item B, approval to participate in internet sales in calendar year 2025. Item C, approval of grant application to ODOT for Sandusky Bay Pathway West End. Item D, approval of first and final change order for Sandusky Wills Park Project. Item E, approval of amendment number three to PDSA for Churchwell and MacArthur Park with Strand Associates. Item F, approval of first and final change order for 2024 Parks Concrete Project with Deans. Item H, approval of eight land bake parcel sale to Firelands Habitat for Humanity.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances and resolutions, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda items and declaring that all ordinances and resolutions as drafted be presented and shall take effect in accordance with section 13 or 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Barnes, you call the role on that motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes, as to all items except.
G.
Geez.
No, I apologize. My, I was going to abstain as to an item on the regular agenda. Never mind. Yes.
Geez.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Item G is one that I definitely will be.
It's on Campbell School?
Yes, on Campbell School.
Ms. Barnes did not present item G, though, so it's not in the motion.
Oh, that's the one.
Yes, you don't, you don't have to clarify that.
Mr. Crable?
Hi.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. Those ordinances and resolutions are passed. Ms. Barnes, you present. Let's see, I think we'll start with item G.
It is recommended, an ordinance be passed amending the official zone map of the city of Sandusky to rezone a portion of parcel number 57-65011 located at 1215 Campbell Street from PF Public Facilities District to RMF Multifamily Residential District, and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect under suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with section 13 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
Move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to section 13 of the city's charter.
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion. Purpose of my moving this to the regular agenda was, I felt more comfortable making a comment on the ordinance and not during the public hearing. And that is that I personally am thrilled that we're going to take an existing structure, although it be a very old structure, and someone's willing to invest money in this community. And the one thing that this commission has been resolute about has been creating more housing. We're doing that right here. We're doing that on someone else's dime. That's a one, you know, that's what we've all been seeking, and I hope we'll continue to seek. I do understand Mr. Murray and Mr. Crable's concern regarding the unused property, the vacant property on the property. But I, for one, hope that our government, or any government, does not get into the business of overreaching and trying to tell the developer, or a developer or owner of a property, what he should be doing with his property. I find that, I find that's an overreach of government. But with that said, I do appreciate Mr. Bajali's comments and Mr. Poole's comments also, that if you put 10, 12 families inside that building, you do need a place for them to have green space. That provides some green space. Will the Nehemiah Center go along with them, allowing residents to use that? That's probably something to be decided between the developer of the apartments and the Nehemiah Center. Those are my comments. Additional discussion?
Mr. Chair. First, I have to let everyone know, most of you probably already know this, but I am one of the original founders of the Nehemiah Partners. So I will be abstaining. But with that said, my comments echo what you said, Dick, what Mr. Poole said, and what Mr. Bajali said. That is, you know, the times are different, and it's like a couple of you have said here, there's not as much going on there at all now. But when the folks who started Nehemiah actually started that project, it was buzzing with children. Buzzing. There were many things happening. There was some money available for tutoring children. At one point, there were nearly 200 children in there every day after school. Now, I'm not an active member anymore since 2014, 15, but I've always appreciated the work that those folks did over there, the work that I did, along with some of those pastors and the members of those churches, and others who weren't members of churches. I'm not one of those people that believe that everybody who is faith-based should be involved in the efforts. I believe that all folks who care about the community should be involved, if they can be. So I wanted to get that on the record, that that's why I'll be abstaining, but I am not against this development. People need homes, they need a place to stay, and the property that's there for those children will still be available. At least, that's what I'm thinking. So just wanted to get that on the record.
Additional discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Crable.
Just let me clarify. I am 100% behind this project, as per Zavis. I, I just think that there's a question hanging in, in the air about, you know, the balance of property. We'll see what comes of that as time goes by, as the developer does his, you know, his or her thing, and Nehemiah does their thing. But I am ecstatic that this project is able to be done, as you said, on private developers' checkbook.
Additional comments, commission? Ms. Barnes, you pull the commission on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Abstaining.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Abstaining.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Barnes, you present item number one, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed making general appropriations for the fiscal year 2025.
Move for the adoption of this ordinance.
Second.
Second.
An a motion and a second discussion. Feel like we've had a lot of discussion already.
Yeah.
Ms. Barnes, you poll the Commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Abstain.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That motion is passed at first reading, and will come back to us sometime in January, I believe. Ms. Barnes, you present item number two.
It is requested an ordinance be passed approving a wage increase for the city's non-provocationary administrative employees, authorizing the finance director to expend the necessary funds, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Vargo.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under fourteen, section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
An a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Barnes, you poll the Commission on the motion.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Barnes, you present item number three.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to accept grant funds in the amount of three million dollars from the state of Ohio through the Office of Budget and Management for the landing project, authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement and to expend the funds consistent with the grant agreement, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
Move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to section fourteen of the city's charter.
Second.
An a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Barnes, you poll the Commission on the motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Barnes, you present item number four.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Progressive Cleaning Solutions Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for cleaning services at four city facilities, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Coontz?
Move for approval of this ordinance under item four, under suspension of the rules, and in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
An a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Barnes, you poll the Commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Barnes, you present item number five.
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with a proposed electrical panel and lighting replacement at the Shade Mylander Plaza Project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crable.
I would move approval of item number five, the resolution thereof, under section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
An a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Barnes, you poll the Commission on the motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Barnes, you present item number six.
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with a proposed electrical panel and lighting replacement at the Shade Mylander Plaza Project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crable.
I would move approval of item number five, the resolution thereof, under section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
An a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Barnes, you poll the Commission on the motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That resolution is passed. Ms. Barnes, you present item number six.
It is requested an ordinance be passed approving the fee schedule for the rental of the gymnasium and rec room at the Mills Recreation Facility, established from the Division of Parks and Recreation, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
Move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to section fourteen of the city's charter.
Second.
An a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Barnes, you poll the Commission on the motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the resolution.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the resolution.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That resolution is passed. Ms. Barnes, you present item number six, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed approving the fee schedule for the rental of the gymnasium and rec room at the Mills Recreation Facility, established from the Division of Parks and Recreation, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Crable.
I move approval of item number six, the ordinance therefore, and do it under section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
An a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wantington.
I've worked at Mills, I know it's been a few years ago, and then I ended up at Adams before I retired. Back then, it was like fifteen bucks an hour to rent the gym, and that, I know that was street excuses, and then it was like thirty for two hours, and even when I went to Ontario later on, it was the same way. That just seems awful high, and they said that was comparable number. Mr. Murray, maybe I could ask him. That's a, to me, two hundred dollars to rent a gym to play hoops for kids or families, that's a little steep. Just my opinion.
Yes, to Commissioner Wantington and Mr. Poole, we had our staff with experience in Elyria, Lakewood, and we met, and we looked at rates in Elyria and Bellevue, Norwalk, at the current rates of where those are at, and this is also to make sure that we have to have staff in the building whenever there's a rental going on, so that the rates were consistent with having a staff member there, to make sure that we can cover the cost of that staff member, and then also run out the facility, those two rooms of the facility.
The cost is really driven by needing to have a school employee on site all the while you're there.
City employee, correct. The other question is how many, we're getting about two to three requests for rentals per month right now.
Two to three per month.
Mr. Chair, what are they typically, what are they asking to use it for?
Birthday parties, especially, that's the biggest thing, is a birthday party where then the kids can run and go crazy in the gym for, for that same time period, so they use the rec room to have, you know, food and cake, and then they'll use the gym, or we've had requests for even baseball leagues, they're not using baseballs, of course, tennis balls, that sort of thing, but baseball for indoor, for indoor use.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wantington.
A follow-up question. So are we going to have staff, is someone going to be assigned? I brought this up when I was still on the rec board. Are we going to have an employee that's maybe going to be there till eight, nine at night if they rent it, like a bunch of guys after work from seven to nine, or? So one staff member, they lock up and...
Yes, that's, that's the plan. So typically, we have our out-of-school wraps up around seven o'clock on a Monday through Thursday. If somebody wants to come in, we've had requests, we could have them come in from seven to nine and keep staff on that's doing the out-of-school program, or we have to have staff come in, if it's a Friday, Friday evening, Saturday or Sunday, we'd have to have staff come in, and we make sure that we have staff available before we confirm the reservation.
And are we CPR trained?
Yes.
Training CPR?
And we have an AED on site, yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Additional comments or questions? Ms. Barnes, you poll the Commission on that motion.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Abstain.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Abstain.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?